We'll call the council budget workshop for September 23rd to order. And six o'clock now, we've got street and sanitation.
Motion to approve.
We're gonna get through quick, bud.
Now, I had to take my granddaughter's.
I just cost fifty dollars for your sanity.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you. No, that's not bad at all. Um, let me see, you all got the budget, right?
Is it 2021?
There's my right hand right there, she's my budget lady. Hey, come on over here. Oh, hey, hey, hey. I want to know where my budget lady was at.
He was sweating bullets seeing you walk in.
Nah. Oh, have you? Oh, sorry, you fell asleep, didn't you?
No, I wish I had.
What page is it going on, twelve?
Yeah, it's our, it's our, yeah. They got the, uh... What, uh... I did, I did put in there, or we had put in there, uh... I had, um, but I think I had two employees in there additional. But that don't have to be, you know, accordingly.
Are we talking about street or sanitation?
On street.
Well, just so everyone's on the same page.
Oh, okay, okay. I keep forgetting they separated. So I had two of them in there, but again, that was just something I put in there.
What of them was administrative assistant part, what was the other one?
Um, well, Stephanie, explain this, how y'all break it, the street department breaks this down on that.
Well, I mean, it, you know, if he wants to add two employees, it doesn't matter to me which one. You do one in each department, actually.
We got street, we got an assistant.
We got motor vehicle and...
Okay, it's too different.
Uh, either motor vehicle or sanitation, neither one.
Got they broke down differently.
Let me ask a question, Amy. You probably maybe know what I'm gonna ask, maybe not. I'd asked for a list of all new hires, and I don't show this on that list.
I thought we put it in here.
I don't, no, I don't.
Okay, well, if we didn't, that's fine. It don't worry about it then, don't act like I ain't say nothing.
That was easy, Nathan.
A minute's...
Yeah, yeah, um... No, it's not a new one.
We got a, we got a hint of...
Okay, let me, let me, let me straighten out, we got, we got...
Wait a second, it's not, it's not a new one.
Right.
You said that's not a new one.
It's not a new one.
Who is that?
That, that, uh...
That's Stephanie.
Yeah.
Well, that, it shows, uh, it shows, uh, it's not accurate in fourteen.
No.
Right, you see the secretary line, couple lines down?
Yeah.
See how it's zero next year? It's because we lived in the correct line.
Gotcha, I wonder what those red lines are for.
Okay, then my next question would be, is you're jumping from thirty-six to thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah, for, uh, yeah.
Okay, did that come out of your performance pool, or where'd you, how'd you increase that to that?
Um, I just didn't have no exactly, I mean, performance should've been fine, uh, but, uh...
He means through the performance increase pool down. That's what you're asking, right?
Yes.
And I don't know...
It should be, I mean, if you just move it up, it's thirty-six even, and it's...
Yeah, it was thirty-six dish. Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I may have.
Yeah, we got, uh... Yeah, motor vehicles. I'm trying to see, I can put my glasses on.
Actually, I was, that secretary's been there before, but was I getting paid out of there? So that needs to be thirty-six thousand, it can't, it can't jump up two thousand, it needs to be the same as this year.
Well, then how did the performance pool increase by almost fifteen thousand? About three-quarters of the way down. See, it went from two thousand nine forty-four.
That's what's left in there, that was above and beyond, it was over budget by twenty-nine. That's the amendment.
What was it last year?
What page are we on?
Don't show that, does it? We're not on it.
They've already moved around to the correct lines.
Yeah, but we kinda need to know what it was last year. Can we find it out now, so we don't have to come back to it?
It is so much easier if you got it right here. That's what I thought those, that amended two thousand fourteen budget numbers were. And they're not, I guess.
Well, part of it is, it's different, too, because when we started out last year, we had, you know, all the employees were in sanitation, and we separated and moved them back. So we kinda split that, um, performance increase pool, am I right, between the two? Like we've, so it's gonna be, it'll seem a little weird, because it's, there's several things on here that we're switching, kinda evening the departments back out, so it doesn't look like... So all the...
The ones that Monica moved over.
Yes, yeah, that's the one that was... Right, we're trying to move them back to the right, how it was before. And then, so like, uniform rental, for instance, all of it was coming out of sanitation, but next year, we'd like for it to come out half out of each thing, you know, split it down the middle, so it's not all out of the one budget. Am I making any sense?
What was the other budget?
Where we moved them?
Sanitation.
Everybody was in sanitation last year.
Right.
Okay, so, and then they got moved back to motor vehicle.
Right.
Right, right, right.
Sanitation, page twenty-one.
Which is where, and I don't have what you all have, so mine's a little different, but that's why our sanitation budget was in so much trouble.
Right, right, I remember that.
So this should make that budget not...
Right.
So let's go over there and look at the performance increase pool.
I guess my question, oh, and Connie just, I think, I think I understand, but
See, it's a eight thousand.
Really on two thousand fifteen on the line items?
Mm-hmm.
If you take the performance pool out of it, them numbers ought to be zero, 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 until they come out of the performance pool and get a pay raise. In other words, there should not be an increase.
No, there should not have, there should not have been an increase.
On any of, on any personnel, once it comes out of the pool.
Exactly, well, the... Right.
Right.
And here's the, we paid, I wasn't here when you all did it, but, uh, I hear Nathan...
Where's the pool stuff at?
We paid a lot of money for that performance pool, decided either we do it or we don't do it. So now, if we're gonna have this question through every budget, I say we take performance pool, put it under the council.
Well, you're gonna have to, because January one last year, they got, everybody got their raise.
And if we got questions, how they did it.
I mean, I, I mean, I agree with you, but here's my question. If you notice, let's just go down under Clark's position, it's fifty-one five. In fifteen, he's got a fifteen hundred dollar increase, okay? It goes from fifty thousand a dollar to fifty-one five oh one, okay? You follow the line item? Which is fifteen hundred dollars, now, is that above and beyond the pool?
No, I didn't get no increase, nothing last year. I didn't get a perform, I didn't get a bonus, or I didn't get because of my time and the job at the time.
Okay, so you only worked like so many months?
Yeah, and then I couldn't get one, I had to wait, just had to wait till this budget session.
So I think that's three percent, right?
Yeah, three percent.
The fifteen hundreds, the three percent, is it just three percent? But this is my question, do we wait till we do the performance, which you're gonna, you're gonna get in with, but do we wait till everybody goes through the process?
I think so.
Scott, I'm asking you, what do you think? I was looking, well, I was looking at you, I was talking to you, but then I'm asking Scott, what do you think?
That's a legal question, I don't think it's a policy.
What was your question again?
Everyone get the raises at the same time, instead of starting January first. I mean, that's what we normally go through, the performance pool, the performance things that they have, that has to be filled out.
Here's, I'll just, I'll just kinda give you an idea of what we do. We have, we have performance go on throughout the year, then your end-of-year performance management usually happens, you know, November timeframe. You find out in February what your raise is gonna be, based on your performance of two thousand fourteen, and it starts payable April first of two thousand fifteen for that year. So your performance is made in two thousand fourteen, your raise happens in two thousand fifteen, based on last year's performance.
Right.
Right.
However, there was no performance done last year, all it...
If they were issued January one, they all...
Everybody got a raise.
Yeah, we did, we did our performance.
Yeah.
We did our...
You did them, but he did a blanket raise, January one, and we didn't find out about some of that.
Uh, 'cause I, I didn't get nothing, 'cause I was short a couple, few months, so...
And because of, I believe we were waiting on the, um, we asked everyone to wait on the cap.
Yeah.
And circuit breaker, because we wanted to make sure we were gonna have enough, and all that stuff, and that did not happen.
How this started, did what we done?
We're a little bit, we're a little bit different than a private company.
Oh, well, I completely understand.
Because we depend on the government, and we never know what the state's gonna do.
But we can always, as Scott said, we can always make a policy that raises aren't payable till May first, and make it count to your May one to May one.
Well, you need to tie in, you also need to tie in the performance issue.
Yeah, you need to have that in, but you definitely probably want to consider the circuit breaker.
Mm-hmm.
And what we did was, we hired a company, and that's right where you guys got here, and we hired a company to come in, and she looked all over, and, 'cause we, there were a lot of people making a lot, and some of them were making way below minimum. And that's how all this came about. This is only, what, three years old, Nathan, four years old?
Four, maybe, yeah, four, probably.
Yeah, and it was...
So the performance pool was set up, that all the department heads would, would go to some type of class setup, and have an understanding on how to do this. Then if you had a pay raise, what we did was, we just took the money and sent it, well, that's the term, performance pool, just a pool of money. And Clark would go through, or Stephanie, they would go through, and they would look at all their employees, and they would rate them on their performance. If a guy or gal did good, they got X number of dollars. If you called in sick all the time, or were late all the time, you might not, you might not, you know...
It wouldn't be across the board.
You might've got five hundred. And that was, and that, that's how all this started, instead of giving everybody blanket raises.
Raises. But with that performance pool, you left the decision of how much that person was gonna get a raise, up to the department head.
Well, we, yeah, it was according to their performance pool.
Yes, yes. But it, but that depends on the department head actually looking at performance, and ranking all nine of us, one to nine.
And they want, they, at that time, Clark wasn't there, but they, Jose, at that time, they all went to classes.
Yeah, but we did that at the end of the year.
Right.
But then, I mean, so far, it's never actually, I don't think, been implemented where you actually choose. 'Cause you could do a, if somebody, you may wanna give somebody a one percent raise, and you had, like, parameters, am I right? You could get, you didn't have to give everybody the exact same raise, based on their performance.
Right.
Which is, was the whole thing.
Right.
Is that that not happening, so you got, then hopefully they will perform better the next year.
Right, give you a better job.
And the department heads went to a class on that, that kinda told them how to rate it, I'm, I'm not sure how it worked, but we paid for that study, and that's how we processed it. So if we figured a three percent raise, times the number of employees, we just took them dollars and sent into the pool. But I don't know, Nathan, did it, did she ever say exactly when they would get the raise, was it like the first? I don't remember.
My, my understanding was, we were, one, we were, we had requested that no raises be given until we get our caps back, since we knew, we wanted to know if we had enough money.
Okay.
And then, two, we said, whenever they do it, we will retro it back to the beginning of the year. So nobody loses their money.
Right.
And, and that was, that was the intent. Some people would get more than three percent, um, and in the salary ordinance or policy, one or the other, there's a, there's a statement that says, nobody can, can get over a dollar, a certain dollar amount, without it being reviewed, or it comes back to the council. It was, maybe it's five thousand dollars or something.
Just to stop someone, and not that that would happen, but someone getting all the money.
There was a few departments that not everybody got a hundred percent of the pay raise.
True.
Right, and ours was one of them, because you have people that are capped out in that paper.
Right, right, in that paper.
Well, I think we need to set a policy.
I think Lisa's, I mean, uh, I think the performance pool, we just need to set that dollar, I mean...
Take it out of everybody's...
Well, just, well, set the money aside on the council, council, just like insurance, it all's under the council. And just set X number of dollars, whatever that may be, then when they go through their performance pool, and we get our tax circuit breakers, or whatever, let's just say June, May, whatever you want, when we get them numbers back, then, you know, the department has no pay gap. But nobody loses any money.
I understand.
But that, would you all agreeable to that?
I think so.
Continue on, and it's three years in, since I've been on the council, and I ain't seen all the, the policy followed yet. So this is the only way that I know that...
Well, some departments have.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that.
I, I support us just moving it, because I remember last year having this conversation, we said, let's communicate with the administration, make sure they understand that we don't wanna do, give this out until we get our circuit breakers back, till we know. And we, we knew that once you put it in the budget, it can be spent January first, and that's what happened. And so I think, well, we gave it, in my opinion, I gave it a shot. We, we still put the performance pool in there, but, but, but where it can't be spent right away, until we know, and then, then when it's time, we tell the departments where you got it.
Scott, do we need to, as a council, do we need to take a vote on that, to move that line?
Sure, I think you need to take a vote, if that's your pleasure to move performance pool money, and to align that under the council's budget.
Okay.
Make your motion.
Then I make a motion.
Can I ask you a real quick question? I know, I know what you're gonna make, I just wanna ask Stephanie something, 'cause it's something that needs to be discussed. We talked about, Nathan, you said if we're gonna give a raise, we make it retroactive back to January one.
Yes.
Looking at, looking at that, does, is, does that not cause a problem? Because when you look at a person who's worked overtime, and...
You have to calculate that. Now, I don't know if the new system would do it before, it was a real pain, because I would have to go back for each employee, and...
Look at overtime, look at anything, yeah.
But I mean, if you made it where raises were May to May, I, I mean, that makes, seems to make more sense to me, because then you don't have to make it retroactive to January first.
Right, because they've got a raise, hypothetically, you got a raise January one of two thousand fourteen, you're gonna carry it till May of fifteen, then you're gonna raise from May fifteen to May sixteen, and if we're gonna make the motion that we hold the pool, we can release it.
Stand up and dance.
April fifteenth, when we get our circuit breakers back, they can go through their process of giving raises May first, and it runs May one to May one.
If it's fifteen hundred dollars, as long as that employee gets fifteen hundred dollars, I don't care to me how you word it.
But, but in this way, they're not gonna get it in fiscal year fifteen.
Another way, reason that it wouldn't really matter, is because now you don't, we don't go by January first as getting your vacation time, it's now, since we have the new system, it's all set up based on your anniversary date. So January, May, it really doesn't matter, I don't think, Jimmy. It doesn't matter.
And if we did it this way, then the following year, it would be the same thing from May, so they would still be there.
The first year, people will take it, because they're not gonna get, in their mind, on their W-2 at the end of the year, you're not gonna get twelve months' worth of, you're only gonna get seven, seven months of it.
Right, I mean, I'd say that always...
I get exactly what you're saying, but that's the...
Whatever, I mean, I'm against either way, I mean, whatever's easier.
We're loving money.
Well, and that's, the thing about it is, is when you start looking at that, when you look at, when you, if you, if you set a date that you're gonna start with, you can budget that three percent, because really, when you start giving raises, and you, you make it retroactive, Dennis, who made fifteen dollars an hour, worked forty hours overtime during that week, it's gonna take a bigger chunk of that three percent than my, my raise, if I made twelve dollars an hour and only worked ten hours overtime. He's gonna get a bigger chunk of money over that time period, it's gonna be harder to, it's gonna be physically harder to, to calculate, so...
Right, and, and budget, like she said.
The only, the other question that I have, I guess, before we do a vote, is, are there any, is there anybody else that has been, we saw the secretary and administrative assistant, there was a change there. Is there anybody else, unlike the commissioner was budgeted to go ahead and get a three percent increase? Was, was anybody else in that, that's, that, um, that is not, that would not receive the same on, in December as they would in January, their pay rate? Because we just gotta be consistent, I think, in...
Well, you, right underneath that, you've got the driver CDL, went up thirteen thirty-five, is that, what's that part, Stephanie? Or is that part, would that be part of the pool?
Driver CDL.
Right underneath the...
Yeah, thirteen thirty-five.
Seven point down.
It's in two thousand fifteen.
Right, I see what you're saying. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can just leave it the same as it was in two thousand fourteen, I'm not in trouble anywhere in mind. I mean, I think I'm okay money-wise everywhere, so just leave it the same, and then, if you guys make the change on the increase. Because see, it, really, this is the first time I think I've looked at anything, that even when they got, the raises were given, it still looked like that performance money was in the performance pool. You know what I mean? And I don't know what point it came at.
I don't think this is, this is what's... You're so far.
Not in that pool.
Amy, real quick, since, since this is, well, since this is different than the last budget that we looked at, so to speak, can you just run through each column? When you look at two thousand thirteen activity? That was the money spent in two thousand thirteen, that's the two thousand thirteen actual expended money, okay? Then you have the two thousand fourteen amended budget, that's what we finally approved at the end of the year.
That is the original budget, and any transfers or additions.
Right, additional appropriations, okay? Then you had the two thousand fourteen up through June thirtieth, I get that, then the two thousand fifteen. The two thousand fifteen requested percentage change, is that over the amended budget, I take it? With additional appropriations and all that?
Yes.
Okay, just so we're all on the same page, perfect, thank you. Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt your motion, I'm sorry.
I'm okay, I'm okay with, with changing how the, where the performance pool is, as long as, once it's time to release that money, the council releases that money as a whole, to the department heads, all the department heads, and we're not sitting and choosing and saying, well, you're not following the policy that, you know, we wanted to do, or something like that.
We just wanna wait till after circuit breakers and all that.
Right, and I'm pretty sure that last year, the mayor told them, you told each department you have till this day to get those in.
Right, they, they were in, because I spoke to Kim about that.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, and not everybody got the full three percent raise.
Right, then I think the money be, it's gonna be up to Kim to say, hey, you didn't follow it, then...
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I had to turn in.
That's not our call, that's her call.
Yeah, but the only problem you're running into there, is if it goes to Kim, and Kim says, hey, you didn't follow the policy, you can't, you're gonna have a short window when we get our circuit breaker backs, then to make it effective May first, if department head didn't follow that, and Kim says, go back and do what you're supposed to do. You know, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, but you know what, that's the department head's responsibility.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it's gonna be an accounting problem for whoever's keeping track of those, so...
Well, but that's, but that's not our...
I would say you make them, they have to have it by April first, no later than, you know...
Like, so we did them last, you know, we did it at the end of the year, when I filled all those out. Yeah, I did all that stuff, so...
We can't, we can't...
Yeah, it's not that, it's not that bad, but anyway, uh... But that's what we had on that, on the, on the, uh... What was that, uh?
Did anybody second?
Well, I make a motion, so I make a motion to put the, all the performance pools under the city council budget.
Second?
Are you gonna put any stipulation on it?
Go ahead in here.
Times, or...
Where's the, where's the trouble in here?
And to, not to be, to make, to make first, is that when you...
Well, the performance, the performance has to be turned in by April first.
Well, should we just, should we have to make the policy?
Stop telling what to say.
And, and do this?
Yeah.
We should set policies with coordinates.
Say it, Scott, I'll say so.
I mean, if you wanna put the policy in this motion. So I don't need to bring it up?
I don't think it's... Pull the money in a pool, then we need to go back, and we need to go back and change the policy.
I wanna read here, I might, I may state something.
Right.
That'll be in, that will be on this budget.
Where's her?
Right now, we're on this.
Then go ahead and make the motion, pull that out.
So my motion is okay, is it staying, can it say it again? Okay, please.
So, Scott, my motion's okay, as I said it, right?
Okay, I make a motion.
To pull all performance pool line items, and put it all under city council budget.
Second. Any other discussion?
I do have one question.
I knew you would.
Yep. We, do, do we wanna say that the, that the rates, or salaries, whatever, that we're approving is, is the same at the end of fourteen as the starting of fifteen? Or we're gonna have to go through every person and say, is this the same rate of pay? Because it seemed like...
So you, so you want me, I need to amend my motion and say, no, no?
That's a question, it's just a question. I don't know, like Clark, and he, he was not aware, he was saying, you know, I was, I didn't get my increase last year, so there's my three percent.
Well, isn't that something we need to look at, under each department, to see that happen? This is, to me, this is a different motion.
I'm not saying tack it onto this one, I'm, I'm saying, do we do a blanket one, so we don't have to look at everybody, and then Amy, just make sure everybody's paid the same? Or you look at every department and say, um, street department, is there anybody else that's bumped up?
He's catching things that we would miss, that's what you're saying.
That's all, yeah, 'cause there's a bunch that are lumped together.
Right.
That, that we, I don't know, and if, once you pass the budget, we passed it, so I don't know.
Well, Clark, last year, it was because anybody hired after a certain date was not eligible for a raise. And he didn't come in till August, or somewhere around there, so he was passed.
Right, that was in June, I think.
You know what I mean?
That was in June, I think. Yeah, yeah, and that's fine.
Right, so that is, and I'm, I'm sure, I don't know if that's something that you wanna think about, too, anybody that's been here less than a certain amount of time. Right.
Change the whole policy to address that.
Right.
What were you gonna say?
That is, that was in writing.
We put all of the performance pool under the general fund, it's pulling from different fund sources, like two oh one is a different revenue stream, sanitation and parks are all different. I don't know if you wanna pull all that into the general fund. I mean, we can't.
It'd be under the council.
Well, we could put a council department in, outside the general fund, and budget it in there.
It was going to be under the council budget, not general fund.
Okay, your budget is in the general.
Well, okay.
That was the only thing I had.
Scott, is there anything, any legalities to that? If we do that, pull from a different fund, to put all of it?
So you're saying some of the performance fund money is like from a dedicated fund?
Like the two oh four is parks, it's a living fund, separate from the general fund. So we wanna budget the performance pool under the general fund, and it's gonna be for a different fund's number. I mean, it's all property tax money.
Yeah.
Except for motor vehicles, not?
Except for motor vehicles.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, it's, I mean, it's kind of just a bookkeeping entry, bro, that's what you're talking about.
Revenue source?
Revenue source, yeah. I mean, I think you have to track that, if it's like a dedicated fund outside of general. I still think it's under council category, where it's under their control, so then they have to get an additional appropriation later.
We could do that, see, do an additional later, outside the general?
That's not a problem.
No, that's not, we, yeah. Well, but what I don't wanna see, is like, here, where it was a thirty-six, and if we don't catch it, like we caught this, moved automatically to thirty-eight, just moving it up. Can we go ahead and take a vote on what we've got on the table?
Yes, and then Nathan can introduce the multiple.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Now, Nathan, yours would be a different motion, now that we voted on it.
Well, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not pushing hard to do that, I'm just...
I understand what you're saying.
Otherwise, we have to go through every, ask every department head, and Amy, is there any change? And if we just say that, um, you know, basically intent is not, not for raises to happen until, until the next year, until we know, and in case somebody has put increases in there, just because they, for whatever reason, they felt like they needed to, then we're gonna stick with twenty fourteen's rate, at the end of twenty fourteen, their rate. And then if we, if we do that, then it's kinda on Amy to make sure that happens, and then we don't have to ask that question for every department head and every person.
So can he make that a motion?
Was that part of the salary ordinance? Is the salary ordinance approval stuff from a budget appropriation? Would that be part of the salary ordinance? I think you have to give a separate salary ordinance approval for certain DLG of timeline, you group budget appropriation, salary ordinance stuff. That's the question that...
There's salary bands, though, it's not...
Yeah.
Then I would make a motion, to see if people wanna vote for it or not, to, um, for the, for all budget numbers that we approve, that they, the rates of pay not change from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen in our new budget, until after performance pool's been implemented and all that, that, and ask Amy in her department, just to make sure that the numbers are, what, they stay the same as fourteen.
As we missed them.
Yeah. So a person who was making forty-five thousand dollars at the end of two thousand fourteen, who has a budgeted raise in here of fifteen hundred dollars, what you're saying is, as a, as a budget, we are not going to allow that until after our circuit breakers are back, and then, if need be, we can appropriate that and do it all on May first.
Yes, everybody gets their limits together.
Is that your motion? Yes. Okay, there you go.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I do have one question, Amy. Under crew leader, in thirteen... Under crew leader, in '13, it was $51,500, if I understand right, what was spent?
Yes. I know it's...
And then it says that in '14, we amended it to 79, under page 12.
Down on street.
And I look back at our budget last year, we approved $67,000. So we moved it from 51,500 to 67, and I'm assuming we did an additional appropriation or something of $12,000 more.
You know why I think that is? Because we had to change, we had to make that title because that one of the guys that get paid out of there has been here since the 70s. And in order for him to ever be able to get a raise, we had to put him in a category, and that maybe, maybe that 51, he didn't get paid out of that the full year. Do you think that could be it? Because there's two people that get paid out of there.
It looks like it went to 79.
So like, so crew leader is two people?
It's two, there's two people paid under crew leader.
I was then going to go back and say that it looks like the street commissioner should be really the highest paid out.
It's actually two people, and they've both been...
You agree with that, don't you, Clark?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Hey, thanks. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just...
Can you look at the year's data activities, 394?
Okay, I, yeah, I just, well, you answered two questions. One is, it's two people, that is helpful. And then the first, the other question was, the 79 had additional appropriation through the year. That's our, so I'm clear.
And it's the same with signage and directional, but there's two people in there also.
Okay.
So that's why it looks a little different. And now that I think, I think what the reason mine was raised, and didn't we discuss moving me to mid-range? Like, because I've been here 15 years? I think that is the reason that we raised that, now that I think about it. But it's been so long since we met on it. And that's probably why we changed that, but we can go back, we need to leave it how it is, how it was.
INPRS increases 13.5, what do you mean? It went from 85 to 95.5. And it showed here, you've only spent $40,000 of your money so far this year. If you keep it up your way, you're going to be under $80,000.
What was that?
That is the perf.
Right, yeah. It must be, it's Indiana perf, I think.
Yeah, that's perf.
Yeah, that's from...
I mean, if we're on schedule, we're only going to spend $80,000 if you increase it to 13.5.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know why it was increased.
Well, that's... Amy, is there a reason why that was increased?
Yeah, okay.
Doesn't make sense based on...
Right.
I don't know.
How can we just move that back down to $85,000 then? If there's adjustments at the end of next year, we can make a...
We can do that.
We do it every day, okay?
Okay.
So we're moving the 98.5 down to 85?
It's the original.
Okay.
You're just basically knocking off the percentage of the request that changed, correct?
Yeah.
I wonder if that wasn't a mistake? They added that up.
I take it salt, calcium, and chlorine is going to...
It's going back to local roads and streets.
Right.
Okay, so it's over here.
Yeah, that's why it's, yeah. Right.
Is that why, I mean, we've got protective clothing in here for '15?
Because we're splitting that up, because it was all being paid out of sanitation now that we moved them back.
Got it.
We're moving some of the office supplies back to kind of...
Construction, reconstruction, same thing?
Uh, construction, reconstruction, that's just money we use for patching, stuff to do with the streets.
But you're going for a $50,000 increase?
Where does this money come from?
The state.
Yeah, the state. We don't, this doesn't come out of the general fund, so I'm not for cutting any of this money whatsoever.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
And I think it's, and I think it's where we cut it.
Yeah. Amy, isn't it based on what we've got this year?
On demand.
They've only used $30,000.
Yeah. When you look at the numbers of what we're getting out of it...
Yeah, but they're doing a lot of patching right now.
Everyone means...
Subdivision's four up.
Yeah, I kind of took maybe three or subdivision. I didn't know they were going to do that hatch, I thought they were going to do the whole.
And what about the professional services, $125,000?
When we start paying them, and all that, that's up with the law.
That could have been, because they moved that over from the other place.
Is that what, professional services, $125?
Stephanie, was that professional services, $125, was that moved over?
Um, you know...
And the contractual services.
And professional services, I really don't know. One right here, it's right here.
It's about $150,500.
It's $125,000. And that's something new. Because our other supplies, the $120,000, that's where we pay for signs and paint. And I really, I really don't know why we moved that.
Amy, do you know what the professional services is for? Did that just happen because of the computer system? I don't want to take money away, because like I said, this comes from the state, this doesn't come from us, so...
I don't see professional services and sanitation at all, so I don't think so.
It's in the, it's in the street department.
It's in the street department, it's on page 13.
You're talking about a split that...
Yeah. I think we do it by... I thought that was covered, right?
Yeah.
Yes, remember we discussed taking down trees and stuff like that could be considered out of motor vehicle? That's why we did that.
That's professional services.
Right, professional services. It's been so long ago since we met that it's, we started to warm up.
Where'd that money come from?
Everything in this budget comes from state.
Okay, contractual services as well?
Yes.
I mean, is everybody good, just keeping that the way it is?
Yep.
Okay. Then, let me see.
Keeping it the way that it is requested?
Yes.
Yeah.
If something comes up, just let us know, or we can...
And it really looks like we've like doubled that budget, but it's just because of switching all those people back. Which is going to help sanitation, which it does come out of. Right.
Repair and maintenance had 1,900, it never had anything in '14, and I mean, what is that? And now you're asking for $1,000.
Um, I guess that is also for... Repair and maintenance. You know, really, the only thing I can see that I would use that for would be like, we've been having a lot of plumbing issues here lately. Yeah.
Was that on the building?
Yeah. And we generally pay for anything like that. They had those automatic flushers. You know, probably, I'm paying, I'm paying it out of contract services, which we changed the name of that. Services contractual, yeah, contractual services is where I'll pay for it now. We had a plumber today again.
And I'm saying, do you need that line item then, if you already have professional contractual services?
We just must have moved some of it over there, out of, we probably split something up, didn't we, Amy? From office supplies.
Contractual services and sanitation went down $24,000.
Right. No, I don't either. And we haven't improvements, but we took that out, right? That's not even requested for anything in there.
Is that state money as well?
No.
State money and...
Anything in the motor vehicle street department is.
It's a totally different...
So if the state comes along and doesn't give you enough to cover the 125 to 30,000, 37.50?
We'll just cut that a bit, we'll start cutting from the back bottom and go up.
And so that's really not us.
And it's the same way with local roads and streets, that's where that money comes from also.
I thought it was what you said earlier.
We're not going to cut anything out.
All right. Do we want to move to sanitation?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Let's go with sanitation.
We're getting about 202 and 203 on page 13.
And the 202 is local roads and streets, which is also state money, and that's really a quick one, if y'all want to glance at it, there's only...
Go ahead and get it. 202.
We just have salt. And...
Is that going to be enough? Look what we did last year.
As I was saying, we don't, we don't know. They're saying more snow this winter, but who knows?
Too much than not enough.
We don't know what...
Do we have any inventory of salt now?
No. Because we can't get it. I've tried again today to get salt, and they told me it's going to be at least November. November, before they...
What happens if it snows in October? We're, we're too blessed, too bad. Give me a number to call.
See, last year, they held out, they held out on us, at the end of the year, they held out on us. So, but now this year... Unless you had a government contract, and we're not a government contract. We are, because we're not pulled in with the state and the county and everybody else, but it's because we use a different type of salt. We use Clearlane, which is better on the environment. It clears, it melts at a lower temperature, it doesn't, it's denser, it doesn't bounce all off the road into the ditch, it stays on the road. That's why our roads are always...
So when you need salt, who do you call?
Um, I mean, there's...
Or you just call, there's not one number you call, you call the...
Now, I will tell you this, Ron Burns has told me that if I ever get in a bind, he'll take care of it.
Why don't we, why don't we get some of that cheap stuff?
Now, when they...
Why don't we get some of that cheap stuff?
Well, see, we also...
Because really and truly...
I know, but I mean, just like, in case there's an emergency in October.
Well, you can't get anything right now.
You can't get anything, you can't get anything right now.
But, and really and truly, and that cheap stuff, in the long run...
You spend more.
You spend more because it's harsher than that.
Well, I just meant, a reserve file for October.
Well, because you can't get anything right now.
Right now, you can't, November is the first.
And she said the barges wouldn't be coming in until November.
So, because we pick it up ourselves, we haul it ourselves from local here, we don't have it delivered.
Does he figure the streets are going to shut down?
Well, if it snows in October, we can't pick a problem.
Yeah, and, I mean...
Might as well put out a thing to all employees, let them know who has the four-wheelers.
Yeah. So they said, they said that the salt also is supposed to go up, they're talking about even for smaller contractors, you know, smaller companies, their own companies is going to have trouble getting salt.
Is there any way we can piggyback with the county to get that state title or whatever?
We could, if you wanted to get the different salt that's... Right.
Oh, how many bodies of cheaper salt?
See, that's the, right. Yeah, they got, they got the little bit cheaper, so...
We get the greater part, why can't they join in with this and make it, does that help us or not?
I don't think so, because, I mean, they don't get enough to... Right.
Okay, guys, we got to keep moving.
Yeah, yes, let's go.
Everybody okay with 202?
Yes.
Let's go to 203 while we're on it.
203 is just a non-reverbing. I mean, it's...
It's all the same.
Amy, what's, it's the same as last year, nothing's changed.
Now, let's go to page 21 for sanitation.
The big thing on 24, who you said, 244? The big thing I want to do is that, I want to change other administrative assistant to administrative one, from secretary to administrative one.
That's not on here, is it?
Is that the third one down?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Secretary to administrative.
Yeah, it's a...
Yeah, probably.
You need to get it from 10.
It goes from a, from a 1 to a 2, from a 1B to a 2.
That doesn't show there.
No, it's, he said from secretary to administrative 1. The pay grades, I can pay the starting, and I can't tell you off the top of my head what you made right now, but the starting goes from 11.25 to 12.40. But I don't, you don't have any payroll stuff, you can bring any payroll stuff. I mean, she doesn't make the 11.25 now, because she got a raise last year. But... And then we're leaving all the other salaries the same, right, it's 2014?
I think everything else was about the same.
On this one, down second to the bottom on the next page, you've got 300,000 marked for vehicles.
What page do you want that?
Page 22.
You know, and I think, did we do that, Amy, because of considering it's garbage trucks, I'm sure. Yeah, packers, well, we was needing another one, we was needing another one. The under-vehicle, 300,000. I think it's garbage trucks, because like, we have one that's 20 years old. 20 years old.
But do we want to, I mean, we wouldn't put that in the, we would probably pull that out better, wouldn't we?
Well, we usually do it out of edit, and I noticed that on edit, we... It was something was decreased. Did we decrease that budget? 51,000, because we take something off?
Yeah, we took something off.
But we just made it, garbage trucks.
Right, we did, but I think there's a couple of different ones. And I know Louie was saying today, we've got one that's like four or five years old, those one-armed trucks, the hopper, see, this means nothing to me. I know what he means, it runs continually. Like, where a packer, you have to manually run it up to smash the garbage. Those one-armed trucks run all the time, so we're going to have to rework. Yeah, we got to send Indianapolis Friday. Yeah, we're sending it up there Friday. The new, the, Phil, I can't remember. But we're sending one up Friday, but we need another packer truck. We don't, we got 20 and 25 years old, those trucks, we run them so much.
Then do you want to leave it in here, or you want to pull it out?
We usually put them in edit.
Yeah, let's pull it out of here and then move it to edit.
We usually get... We usually get a lease for it, usually, a lease.
We'll have to research, well, you can research that.
Was that 300,000 for the one truck?
No, 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 be, uh, two, one eighty, two, uh, two hundred.
About a hundred and eighty thousand for one.
Yeah, mm-hmm. No, it wouldn't be the three hundred thousand.
One on bandit, thirty-five thousand. How much? For the one on bandit, so for the good vehicle, like we thought.
But lemme, but you're replacing a Packer, are we, are you gonna replace a Packer with a Packer, is that what you're saying?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Yeah, like, there's a lot of places you can't use those one-arm trucks.
Right, right.
Downtown, you've got.
Yeah, you can't do it.
There's so many cars, nowhere to park, and they can't get the cans that they're behind a car, and there's power, you know, there's just so much involved downtown.
Okay.
And areas like that, that you can't actually use those.
You all, mind taking the vehicle, the three hundred thousand, just take it out here and walk it into edit?
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
What's the, say, well, where does this, this isn't general fund money, so.
Yeah, yeah, this one is. Yeah, the sanitation, sanitation is.
And, and the extra hundred and twenty thousand in that line item, what, do you have that targeted for anything?
Which?
We, we're paying on the vehicle, let me see.
Well, you, we led you to three hundred.
Yeah.
And I thought you said the garbage truck was a hundred and eighty, is what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, it was a hundred and eighty, two, two hundred most, uh, garbage truck.
I don't know whether, maybe, um, Louie was saying something about needing, we've got some salt spreaders that are about to. Maybe wanna get one, but we can just take all that out of there.
If you.
They leave it for the, for the levy, and then pull it out of edit later if we need to cut.
Take it out now, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying leave it, and then cut it if we have.
Do we need it for the levy, what's his question?
Now, some of that stuff, I think, on the capital expend- expenditures or whatever, I mean, several of us or whatever could go meet you guys and look over the stuff and get a good idea of what we're talking about, so we do purchase that stuff, we know.
Right.
I don't know, I don't want to.
I have a, have a question.
And you all should know that if Louie says we need something, it's killing his soul to spend a dime.
Cause as tight as he is.
Because he cannot stand it.
He gets feet on.
But I like it that way.
I know. He turns that every night. He cannot leave till he turns the power on.
Okay, so we're gonna pull the three hundred out, put it to edit.
Yeah, and then we'll just set something up for capital expenditure and look over.
Everything else okay?
Yes.
I do have a question just about the, um, it doesn't really affect this, but about vehicles and other capital improvements or other capital projects. At one point, we had talked about, um, you know, we have vehicle ordinances that really haven't been followed. We have vehicles that have been purchased that we probably all get questioned about and, and, and all. We talked about pulling that out, and then maybe noting how much that they, that they needed or asked for a vehicle by their department. But then when it's time to get it, kinda like we did with the, um, performance pool, let them come back and say, I need to replace this Ford pickup truck with another Ford pickup. We can make sure they go through the right procedures to get the, to meet our ordinance, which is one of the issues.
Capital expenditures on vehicles?
Yes, and then, you know, and the pushback's gonna be, department heads are gonna say, oh, well, you all may need a vehicle and it takes too long, but I don't, I, I mean, we can do, turn it around in two weeks.
Oh, you can turn.
So do, and my question is, do we wanna pull that out? Do we wanna pull that out? Um, at, at one point, I, I wanted to do that, and, um, and do it similar to how we did the performance pool. And I'm not necessarily talking just about this one.
Right.
I'm talking about, since you guys were the first one, you're kind of the guinea pigs.
We're the guinea pigs, right.
And I apologize. And that's okay.
Well, remember when you guys had the thing where if you spent over five thousand dollars, it had that kind of, I kept doing that, cause I didn't know quit, and then everybody told me to quit doing it.
It just quit, yeah.
Cause I didn't have to do it anymore.
We have all this in place, and it doesn't get followed.
I don't know what that, but if you buy a vehicle, it's supposed to meet certain EPA standards, and nobody adhered to that, that's an order.
I guess my thing is, if the money is not where they can just go pull the trigger on it, then they have to come, and they have to kinda do what Stephanie's saying. That's my question.
It don't, I mean, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it. If somebody's got a vehicle, if they call me, I'll be more than happy to go look at the vehicle or, or, you know, talk to them about it. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, they used to come before the council and say, this is, this meets the ordinance. Cause that, those, I remember Ed asking that questions of numerous department heads. But it's not been followed recently.
I didn't look, does other department, I mean, is every department requesting vehicles nationwide?
Oh, I have no idea.
Well, there's a number of vehicles. There's a number of them. I don't know about every department.
And we have in the, in the motor vehicle budget that we've already went through, we have forty-five thousand.
Five, four.
That was in there last year, we would like to buy a pickup truck with it. But, I mean, it's nothing that we didn't have in there last year.
Yeah, it was, it's been in there, and we didn't use it. Yeah, that's what I was gonna get, Louie, his truck is bad.
It's a bad problem.
It's got problems.
The, the engine and everything shakes and, oh.
Well, uh, yeah, he's always, he's for one in the city and the other, but vehicle maintenance done all they can do to it.
They have, yeah, yeah, it does.
For the, I guess for the sake of time, I will make a motion. Um, I'd make a motion on, this is a blanket statement. It's not just for you guys, it's for, for all budgets, that any capital purchase, we move under the council. And then, we, we track what, we ask what they need, what they're anticipating, so we, we're adding all their dollars up that they're wanting. We set that over here and, and under the council, and then when he comes back and says, I need to get a Packer, I need to get some salt truck, whatever, whatever you just said, I need to get a replacement truck.
Yeah, yeah.
We say, yep, you talked about that, and then we, at that point, we, I guess authorize that, and then we, we pay it.
Well, normally, they would come to the finance committee. It wouldn't even come before us, it would go to the finance guys, and you all would.
Recommend it, or?
Well, I've been to the, I've went, looked at the garbage truck before.
Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't.
Just, just so you know, even if it comes before us, it still comes before the council.
It does.
I understand that, but.
We don't, I, I wanted to make sure everyone understands that. We do not make that decision.
We recommend it, or we don't recommend it?
Yeah.
My second, Nathan.
Could, could I, uh, bring something up about that on, on vehicles? Uh, and I think, uh, Councilman Gill knows, uh, like, Louie's truck about ready to drop out. The motor, the area, it's messed up, and, and, uh, Mr. Vincent said he couldn't do nothing with it, and we did have some forty-five thousand from last year, we don't need all that for that, but, let's say, we need twenty-eight thousand. But, I always wanna know if here soon, I can go and try to get him something.
Yeah, and just follow the ordinance.
Yeah.
And bring it, and make sure it meets the ordinance.
Right, right, and it was on, cause we already had it, it's been in, it's not.
It's in your budget, so.
Right, mm-hmm.
And bring it to us?
Yeah, I bring, I follow whatever I need to do, cause I wanna, I wanna do what's right for the situation.
And this is.
Yeah, I know, I know it's not.
You know, I try to stay. You always, email you all.
And if you bring it to us, we can move pretty quick, though.
Okay, alright, okay, cause that's what I was wanting to try to get from you pretty soon.
Bring it to the finance committee first.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and then we'll carry it through this, the council.
Okay.
Right. This, yeah, this is not applied, this, what I just, the motion I just made does not apply to the, to the truck you just talked about.
Okay.
Cause that's, I'm talking about for twenty fifteen.
Okay.
So you do your thing with, with Louie's truck, whatever, if you, there's money and you need.
Yeah, we got it there.
Follow the procedure.
Okay, I follow the procedure.
I'm talking about twenty fifteen.
Just repeat motion, we can vote on it in a second.
Um, I just, I make them.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, uh, any other discussion on that?
Do you ha- do you have a definition of capital purchase? Any, and, well, anything in.
Anything over five thousand dollars in the capital.
That's what I'm asking for. I mean, what type of limitation that you wanna put on a capital purchase? Cause we have it in ordinance, our risk.
We do.
Okay, so it's already defined, so any, my motion would say, anything over five thousand dollars and all vehicles. Well, no, if they get under that, it's fine.
If you can get one under five thousand, please direct me.
Yeah.
We haven't seen department heads either yet.
Okay, anything over five thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen.
That would be considered a capital purchase.
Council.
Uh, and the, yeah, that would be.
And tr- uh, and it's so that we can tra- council can track it.
But wait. What's different than the policy we already have? Why?
Why do we need to move these things under the council's budget if we have an ordinance that requires council approval anyway?
Um, I, I, I told, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, remember when we made that ordinance about them coming to the five thousand, that was only for a specific period of time?
The time, you're right.
It's not, no, it's not valid any longer.
But we can re-up that policy for next year.
Um, we.
Um.
Well, but we would have to do that. I, I don't have a.
Well, I guess you could.
But that meant it's one way or the other, yeah.
Nathan makes the motion.
That's fine.
Nathan, make your motion.
He already did.
We got, and Mike got a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
This is the recording. Yeah, wait, yeah, can you reset?
Okay, the, the motion is, um, any capital purchase over five thousand dollars, five thousand and above. We capture the, that amount under every department and accumulate that under the council and put capital projects. And we track, when they come to us like this, they've said, we need a Packer, we need a couple, maybe ice, or for salt things, whatever they said. So we would take their three hundred thousand that they just presented to us, and the forty-five or whatever from the other page.
Scott, I understand that, yes.
And we would start adding all that up, and at the end of the day, um, we're not adding any money or taking any money away, we're just moving that amount. Is that clear?
And that does the, does include vehicles on the.
Now.
Email.
Yeah, and, and any capital.
Okay, thank you all.
And I think on sanitation, everything else is pretty okay. There's some that are minus because we moved it over to motor vehicle and.
I think we're good.
Hey, thanks for y'all time, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Matt.
I voted, I don't know if anybody else.
Ron, did you vote?
I was, I was for.
He was for.
Dennis, man.
Okay. Andy?
Seven one.
These both moving.
We'll do it.
Engineering.
What page, Amy?
Two. Vehicle maintenance.
That's me. Approved.
Wrap it up.
That was easy enough. Engineer department.
Wrap it up.
More page sheet engineer.
Andy, were you privy to what we talked about with the performance pool?
No.
What, what we decided as a council to do was to take the performance pool that would have been for your department, pull it out, put it under the council's budget. After you all figure out what your raises are gonna look like, we're gonna make them effective May first, and they'll run May first to May first. Does that make sense? Because what we were doing was, we, we weren't making those raises until after the, uh, circuit breakers came back, then we were making them retroactive to January first. And we don't know that our chrono system is gonna keep up with that, so we're just gonna make it effective May first to May first. Is that correct? Did I state that?
Pretty much.
For twenty fifteen.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we, we said we're gonna make them May first to May first.
Right.
We said that's a policy decision that we're gonna, we, we just moved it over, and then the, the council with Kim and HR, or the mayor, whatever, will develop that, so I think that's.
Cause after circuit breakers, I thought we were gonna release it.
Yeah, cause we talked about maybe going retro, not going retro.
But you still have to do your evaluations.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Andy, on your, on your budget on two thousand fifteen request, for example, I, I guess, is that part of the, you've got like the, uh, system technician, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and, uh, and Becker engineer, four twenty-eight, where'd them numbers come from? Is that part of the, how's that figure? You go two thousand fifteen, if you just go across the line, there's, uh, on-call stipend, well, I know that's near, um, personnel, though. Is that, was that part of the performance pool, or how do you come up with that?
I don't know that we came up with that money in our, between back and on.
Twenty fifteen request of budget is what we actually make this year, minus the first two pays of January, cause, yeah.
The first two pays of January was on over eight.
So if everything stayed as is right now, that's what the salaries would be for. Twelve months for twenty fifteen.
With no increases.
With no increases.
With no increases.
This is.
But including the increases they received this year.
Exactly.
Right.
That's what that's illusion.
That's that one percent increase. Okay.
So, Amy, I have a question. Um, did Aunt, did you talk to Lynn Ashack about moving his salary from sewer to general fund? Is that reflected in here?
Yeah, I think that already.
They were talking about in the sewer board meetings, about, Amy.
But not all of it.
No, not all of it, eighty percent. Oh, they did, okay.
Drainage, drainage was paying some. I don't remember what the number, the percentage breakdown was now, but drainage was gonna pay some, sewer paid some, and, and the rest would come out of general fund. I don't remember the percentages either.
I just wanna make sure it's corrected in this budget, that's it. So, are you wanting, what was the break, you don't remember what the breakdown was in drainage, so we can?
I don't remember, I don't remember what the request was between drainage, wastewater, and just general fund.
Do you do a lot for wastewater?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Lynn and I work together a lot.
He, he does a lot for everybody.
So, I, I mean, I, I felt that the percentages were broken down reasonably, I just, I just don't remember what they were now, yeah.
They're so close on our sewer.
That's interesting.
Um, how is, how is the per figured? Is that just a calculation based on the total salaries or whatever?
That would be all the salaries, overtime, and on-call pay, and based on all those.
Besides, is, uh, performance pool being pulled, I don't see.
It's pretty straightforward.
There's not a, there's not a lot in there.
On your budget, on your, your, your position, though. I don't see much broke down in here, do you?
Uh-huh, it's not in here.
Where? Is mine, is mine even in here at all?
No, you're not either.
See, that's why I was asking, I don't see engineer in here.
Okay, I'm gone.
Assistant engineer, and I see construction.
We're trying to approve this person.
It was as of June thirtieth, that whole decision was made at June thirtieth, so that's why it's not showing on here.
So we gotta put it in here.
On here, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Things just almost got awkward.
We're gonna add you.
So we're just gonna add it, and you find out your salary's no longer there.
Okay.
Long C gets paid.
Okay. Any other questions on engineering?
Yes, uh, I had a couple.
What page are you on?
Page two.
Page two.
The overtime has increased over a hundred percent. Is there a, what's the anticipation there?
We had a, the system electrician changed from a, what's that?
And his tech?
And his tech, well, his tech was already an hourly position. He changed from, because of some HR issues, he changed from a salary position to an hourly position.
That makes sense. Uh, and then the professional services, you had nine thousand budgeted for this year, we spent a hundred bucks. What exactly is that for?
Any, we use that if we ever need a, um, study done, if we ever need.
Red Wing?
Red Wing, if it's not gonna come, Red Wing does environmental work, if it's not coming directly out of drainage, if it's for something else, if we need to, uh, do an evaluation, a subgrade under asphalt, something like that. We don't use it all the time, every year, but it's just something in there that, in case we ever do.
Um, other supplies, you're just about to cap out, if you haven't already, and you've asked for the same amount next year, is that sufficient?
I think it's fine.
Well, if you look at office supplies, it went up quite a bit, it went up two hundred and sixty-three percent, so whether it's not office supplies, it's other supplies.
I understand.
And I kinda figured that's, that was a trade-off or a computer or something.
It's an increase in office supplies, you should move to a new office.
Partially.
Partially.
Any other questions on the engineers?
Thought we did.
If it's a different.
Just wanna get the, get the numbers figured on his salary.
Yeah, we gotta get Andy's salary.
Four twenty-one, and other supplies are four twenty-nine, they're both on a four twenty series.
So like, any, or?
We can move on.
Okay.
If you're gonna take a four thirty-two or four twenty, you didn't have to get.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, guys, thank you all very much.
Wait, wait, where's your ADA and your fifty-fifty?
It's.
It's in there.
On them.
Page.
ADA's at the very bottom of your, I don't know where that is on.
Yeah, I don't know what you're looking at. I've got a.
They're looking at the same thing, but I convinced all of ours to save paper.
Fifty-fifty's on twenty-eight.
There's your fifty-fifty.
Fund four oh five, I don't know where that is on.
Twenty-eight.
There's your ADA.
Page twenty-eight, on mine.
No, there it is. Okay, so ADA we did bump up, correct, Amy?
Actually, this year.
We bumped it up to a hundred thousand, which we needed.
Right.
And what was that, um?
The ADA, cause we're.
What page?
Mandated.
Eleven.
Eleven.
So we're.
In the middle of the page.
So we're knocking that off, approving that?
Yes, that's, yes, that's state mandated. You need more money in there.
We're gonna use part of that money to do a complete inventory of our entire sidewalk system for ADA compliance.
Well, that's a good point, Andy, I know, I know Mike brought it up.
ADA's on page eleven.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle, it's zone department, eight five.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
It's the dividing one in the middle.
So, so basically, they're asking for a hundred thousand for ADA.
Say, we bought things for the new office there, we bought the.
Yeah. When, when, when we have, um, Mike brought it up last time, we did some paving in his area, and there was actually lips from the road up to the ADA service. I mean, do we not have a, a knockoff list or checklist before we release funds to those crews that do the paving for us? I mean.
Yeah, and we don't do the paving, that's.
Right, I was just wondering, I mean, you were talking about repairs and stuff, that money's not gonna be making those repairs, though, correct?
No, 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 this is just for sidewalks.
I know, okay.
Well, somebody paid to cut four curbs out and rebuild them, so I know the pay, the payers didn't pay for it.
They may have.
That was pretty nice, nice of them.
Yeah, they may have, and they said they were gonna fix it, yeah.
And so the rest of the council knows, Andy brought up to Dennis, myself, and Nathan today, he was budgeted thirty thousand?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand, when I gave you thirty.
Thirty works.
Okay, we'll go thirty, okay. In the fifty-fifty fund, but that was his budget, we proved it last year for this year's budget, but the money was never moved in there. So now we're at, you know, he needs that money in there, so we kinda told him this time, take it out of the general, but moving forward, we need to decide where his fifty-fifty fund money comes from. It's gonna be QM cap, general, or edit.
And I know Les Merkley pulled up an ordinance, or I think you went and got an ordinance, and it just said that the fund component would come from a non-reverting sidewalk renovation fund or something like that, which.
The one that he showed me, it said it'd come under, out of council's budget, it clearly said council's budget from a tax fund.
Tax fund.
And that's all it said?
Yeah, it did, it was nondiscrept.
So we, as the council, need to decide where that, does it come out of general each year, are we gonna take it out of edit each year, are we gonna take it out of QM cap? Right now, I propose, that's three, that it go ahead and comes out of the general for this year, to get that transferred in. I think they'll have that ready for our next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That way he'll have his move forward, what you guys, so that we know.
She's just going to put it in there.
Well, he has the money, I mean, that's fine. Because, I mean, he's only used 12,000 on 20.
That, and that's used as a, it's on a per-call basis. Typically, when residents call and say, hey, I need the sidewalk out in front of my residence replaced, that's, that's where that comes from. So we don't have a long-term plan of where we're going to use that money, it's more of a plain-based.
I think about going...
Right, we're just paying 50%, 50%.
I mean, you're getting, you know...
Big bang for the buck.
It is.
Yeah.
And a lot of people choose...
So we get any...
Couple people. Oh, no. JT on it already.
Are you saying the other supplies?
No, the bottom line, the equipment line.
Oh, the equipment line. What is that, what's that for? Is that going to be...
Pull it off the shelf, we've got whatever so far.
That could be anything under engineer.
We're going to replicate that, but don't...
In the past, it was always the whole, I mean, I would have been under the other services and charges historical, and for some reason, they got, and we were requesting 30 for this year, so they split it up 15,000 for other supplies and 15,000 for equipment.
It's down to 80.
It's down, like I said, I've had two or three positive.
Probably about as far as equipment.
It could be whatever you want to use for.
Yeah.
Equipment.
It's just a non-reverting fund, it's been, I don't know how it was ever set up.
Not reverting.
Yeah.
Are you saying no?
I think we can take it there.
It's not reverting. I'm not going to fall under that stamp.
Now, we did any new, new...
I don't know why you would.
I don't know if you can, if it's under a non-reverting.
We're not asking for money to be put into that fund, yeah.
You just split it up.
Yeah.
Good, Andy, thank you.
So...
What about streetlights? And the KIMCAT on page 28?
430.
What's that? It is kind of all over the place.
Hey, where are we at, Heather?
Page 28 at the top, which we like.
Would you need to bump that up? What'd you bump that up? He bumped it up to 75, and then you all, the circuit breaker hit, you cut it.
So we're just reestablishing it at 75. That's just the money that we used to put in residential streetlights.
Now, these are streetlights for like, by the, or are these traffic lights?
These are streetlights, not traffic.
No, streetlights, it says streetlights. The light itself, I thought that was all...
Well, that's, that's what we were just talking about, Rick does it.
Well, Rick does it, and he gives me the bills to pay it, and that's where they get paid from.
It's in our budget, but Rick handles it all.
Okay, whatever. But I think if it's under you, then you need to do it, you're the engineer. Then maybe we wouldn't have this lapse in getting our streetlights, just saying. Just saying, Rick works for the sewer department.
I will take note of that.
Rick works for the sewer department.
Handle that, Andy. I'm sure you can change it.
Yeah.
Well, the money's under you, so you're responsible for it, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, and it, page 30.
All over the place, Mike.
Well, I'm not feeling sorry for Andy. I'm just saying.
I've, I've never asked you to. What are we looking at now?
I might feel sorry for Mr. Vindman.
We're looking at the 600,000 for professional services.
Very bottom.
Engineer on steel.
Okay, what does this professional service for?
I don't, I don't know why that's listed as professional services.
What is it?
It's the sidewalks. It's the, that's the sidewalk money.
Well, let's change it to sidewalks, then, not professional services. I think of professional services, I think of the terms of engineers.
I mean, we may enlist some professional services in the design of that, but it's, it's not just...
Could be professional.
Yeah.
Promoting.
Don't get me started.
Is that sidewalks?
Yes.
Do you want to take that out and move that to the other sidewalk?
No.
No. We want to leave it in Edit.
Yeah, we can stay where it is.
Change the name.
Just change.
Just change it from professional services and scratch it out, put sidewalks.
Okay, that's fine.
How much do you want in there?
What he's got.
You only get them where you want them.
600.
Isn't that what we gave him to do all the projects with?
Well, I've got to spend missing part.
Yes, but some of that's coming out.
I realize that.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, hold on, there was one more, general fund.
Can I ask a question on that?
Oh, yes. Blackberry and traffic.
We, you put together a, a, actually done several times, a priority list of sidewalks.
Master plan.
Are we going, are we going to go by that priority list?
We are. This, I mean, you, as a council, approved funding for specific projects to not be moved.
It was like 780.
It was like, yeah, that's, it was nearly $800,000. You should see 12 streets, road diet.
But I mean, we are going by that.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, this, just so we are all clear, this 600 has nothing tied to it. We didn't say go...
Oh, okay.
So if he wants to put all the, all of them out in, what's the name of that place?
Come up with a plan, Andy.
Okay.
He going to put them all on Skyline Acres?
There's an Eevee out there.
That he's got 600.
They don't want them!
They don't want them. We, we gave him other money for that other list. This is different dollars.
Except for visiting Park Drive. That'll come out of here.
I'm just, we didn't tie it, this is not tied to anything. The other is already, it's different money.
Well, he needs to come up with another...
That's separate.
Do we get to keep it if we just spend it all?
That's in an ordinance.
Right, that, right. Well...
That'd be great, but...
Could this be used to, like, in the different neighborhoods? I know we had a lot in Tynes, we had a lot in my neighborhood, there's a lot in Riverside, where we make them walkable, where we can replace the crumbled and the broken, and the ones that go up and down.
There's a number of them, that can't afford to do it, they just can't.
Can we, can, is this going to be something that...
I mean, I've had this, I've had this conversation...
No, they can't afford to do it, and we've done this before, like, Maple City took care of all of that.
Right.
But they didn't have to replace. Hey, I don't care.
Hey, Maple Street School, uh, school council requested that.
I know, I was there.
Okay.
I was there, I'm the one they requested it from.
I'm looking at you, Zeller.
Just saying.
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, we got to keep moving, guys.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
I got your...
Hey, Andy?
Oh, you're already there.
I didn't even know.
I got money!
Just money and streetlights.
Wait, what, what?
Board of Public Works.
I thought you said page 11.
It is 11.
It is page 11.
A lot of traffic signals.
Traffic signals.
Oh, okay, I was... What does that mean, electric utility? You paid, you pay the electric bill?
Pay the streetlights and traffic signals all around the city.
Gotcha.
But we'll approve that when we do the BPW, won't we?
Yeah. Is that, is that enough for the traffic, what's a traffic signal? That cannot be the cost for putting in a traffic signal.
It's not. It's for buying new bulbs, buying new heads.
I gotcha.
Lenses, yeah.
Control boxes.
It won't put that, no, it, that's, does not cover the cost of signaling intersection.
Okay.
Typically, you'll, at this time of year, you guys, when you're looking at this, you're probably not seeing that we spend very much out of it. What we do is we, we spend whatever we need to for repair throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, we look and see how much we got, we have left, and we buy uh, control cabinets, and lenses, and bulbs, and just stock up for the next year. That's why you see that number fairly low, and we just stock up.
Is that what you've got them when you need them?
The way we have them.
Yeah, you did that for that turning light from middle onto House and Link, thank you very much.
Right, that's why we do that.
Is there a...
Saved a lot of lives.
Is there a reason why this is under Board of Public Works and not under you? Just curious.
The favorite answer, it's always been...
It's just always, yeah.
I think it should be moved under, said engineer.
Which ones are these are yours, Andy? The electric and the traffic?
Well, the traffic signals is specifically money that Jeff Johnson is using to purchase material from. I agree, that should be under engineering.
Okay.
That staff person's under there. The electric utility portion, I guess, we get a bill from Duke and we pay the bill. I mean, there's not, we're not buying infrastructure, anything like that with it, so...
Who signs off on that?
Somebody has to physically, we do.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
So anything that you sign off of should be under you?
Well, who's signing off on, anything under Board of Works? I mean, in that case, I mean, you don't have a Board of Works director, department head.
Right. The Board of Works approves.
If it's by vote, if you all approve it.
Doesn't make any sense.
Because we approve all the, they approve their...
The board's not...
Doesn't matter.
But I'm saying the Board of Works is not voting to authorize paying a Duke bill every month. Maybe they should, but...
Yeah, they're not, you're right. We do that.
Right, that's, I'm...
You want to leave it, or you want to pull?
I would, I think it needs to be under his, and they'll prove it in the budget person.
It's never discussed. I mean, it's, we approve it in here in claims.
So you're just wanting to move the electric utility and not the street?
And the traffic.
You want to move them both, together?
Let's move them both.
Move them both?
Put them under Andy, and then we'll get them.
Congratulations, Andy, you just acquired...
I just doubled my budget.
Well, then we'll have to flip through, one less page next year.
What's that?
We'll have to flip through one less page.
That's right, get it all together, I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know one thing that I, I want to bring up, and I said something to Andy, and I'll bring it up to you guys. We've had two, on Spring Street, we've had two traffic, uh, streetlights actually hit, and they're broke off. They do have power lines underneath orange cones.
I don't think they're...
One on Riverside Drive.
I don't think they're powered, though. I don't think they're energized.
If they're in, if they're in the series with the rest of the streetlights, it would be.
I think Jeff told me that they are not energized, yeah. But we need to get them replaced.
Well, the one on Riverside, I didn't, I didn't realize the one on Riverside's broke, too.
I was thinking the one on Spring and...
You've got money, Andy, replace them.
Maple?
There's two.
Okay.
Spring and Maple, I was told they were waiting, again, for the insurance.
We, we can't keep doing that. I mean, we...
You got to choose if you want to replace.
Yeah, I mean, there's been this insurance issue that we've been dealing with for a long time.
The wires are sticking out of ground.
Oh, the police bearing, that should be under there.
Yeah.
The wire under an orange cone.
Okay. I've asked him about it, he's told me they're not energized.
Okay, so do we need to get, why, do we need to buy a post?
We just need to buy the post and get it done.
And get that done.
Well, I think the issue has been, where do we buy the posts?
Right.
Where do we buy the new post from? What, what line item, out of my budget, would we buy that post from?
We just gave you 400,000.
I mean, we can do that, we could take it out of the...
Electric utility.
Electric utility.
Well, electric utility, if you look, we spent...
But I don't really...
It's not real.
Yeah.
Is it streetlights or traffic signals?
142,000 now, 385.
And how much did that cost?
Yeah, but we're continuously adding.
But yeah, but they spent 276 the year before, it looks like.
Yeah, but we're continuously adding streetlights and subdivisions.
Right.
Well, that's utility, but I'm saying still, we still have...
Wendy Hines' streetlights just came along.
But he's got enough, he's got enough to do it this year, probably, out of this budget.
It, there's money there if it's appropriate to take it out of that line item.
That's what I'm saying, and if...
We've never done that.
I think that's why this money's second.
It's a streetlight.
If it's a streetlight, could we not take it out of that line item?
That would be like telling the fire department, they can, you know, fix the pipes with their water.
Yeah, we, it stays to pay utility.
Right.
That's the issue we're up against on, when we have the pulls down. I don't have any really good place to pay it out of.
Yeah, out of that.
Well, hey, you can ask, you can get a price on two utility poles, let's say they're $3,000, and ask for a transfer of utility to $3,000 about lights.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
I mean, it's, I mean, that's, it's been like that during...
It'll be okay.
Every time. Well, hey, you can ask... You can get a price on two utility poles, let's say they're $3,000, and ask for a transfer utility to $3,000 for lights.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I mean, it's been like that during...
It'll be okay.
Every time. All they had to do downtown was add two orange cones for wire.
Well, could that go under traffic signals?
It could go under the street light. The one that was 75 that got cut to 46?
But we raised it back up.
Right. That's for next year. We're talking about money.
We could take it out of that, the 75.
I don't know what my balances are as of today, but if they're all talking like $3,000, I don't see why not.
You gotta argue over buying two streetlights. You got wires sticking out of ground. Somebody...
Talking about taking it from...
It don't matter to me, that one.
Yep.
So we're gonna leave this electric utility where it is, correct?
You're moving them to engineer?
Yeah, we're gonna move it to engineer because we pay all of the... All of the utility bills come to the council anyway.
So we're gonna move it? We're just not gonna touch it?
Not yet.
No, he... Yeah, he...
So we're moving electric and traffic signals?
Right, right.
We're good.
Andy, why don't you look at your budget for the rest of the year, figure out how much those two signals are gonna cost? Bring it to us, and we'll figure out how to pay for it.
I'm fine with taking them out of that 440... That 403 line.
Okay.
The 75,000.
Okay.
And just a question, should we buy three and have one in inventory so it knocks down? We don't have to wait six months? Put it with the rest of your parts here under traffic signal parts?
So what happens? Okay, you replace that pole, somebody comes through, knocks it down, their insurance pays for it. Pays some of it.
Yeah.
Pays it to the city. What happens to that money?
It should go back in this fund.
Police do.
What?
It should go back in the fund that it was paid out of.
Where's it going now, though?
I thought Amir set up an insurance fund that all the money went into, and then we were supposed to make requests out of that or something.
Could it not get paid through that?
Well, when we get to BPW, we'd do that.
I don't know. I mean, that's... If we haven't been paid for that light from whoever's insurance, that money that's in there should be going toward...
Yeah.
Actual...
I don't think that there should be a fund set up like that. If we're getting insurance money back, it should go back to the department that had to replace...
I thought the issue was the State Board of Accounts said that we couldn't because of...
The voter could not.
We could, because I pulled that from State Board accounts, because Monica kept doing it, because that's what Russ was having all those issues about. Remember?
I think that's what we were told was that...
Andy, you could check.
If you budget $20,000, and you put $20,000 into a line item, and then there's an insurance claim, you can't put another $5,000 in there because you only budgeted 20. That's the way I've understood it in the past, that that money had to go back into your fund. And then it could... Then you could come as a council and reappropriate additional money to put it back in, but it had to get filtered through your fund first.
That's right. Yeah, you can check on that. It don't matter. That's what I think.
I'm not...
Because you've already paid for the street light once.
I think it can. I just think it has to come back through you guys first for that money to be...
Well, all I'm saying is, and maybe this is not for you, maybe this is for Amy and Amir. They need to make sure that they say this money needs to be reappropriated to this instead of setting in a separate fund someplace.
I thought Amir would take care of that.
We've done that with the police car, we've direct nervous money come back. We eventually put it back in that fund.
Yeah.
How it gets there does, I'm not sure, but he needs the same money to apply.
Amy, can you get some interpretation on that?
Okay.
Anything else for Andy?
I don't know what other page.
We've... We've had a request in the long range, in our five-year capital improvement plan for a bucket truck, a new bucket truck for Jeff. We add it in our requested budget every year, and it gets cut, I think, every year. I would just ask that that still be... I know. I would just ask that that be considered.
That's nowhere in here, though?
It's not.
Mm-mm. It's not in here.
Need to put it in.
I think it was 75.
Put it in there so we can cut it out.
There you go.
Under... Well, because what we might do, we'll move it under the capital, and if we got the money, then...
Then that's... And that's the only reason I want to bring it up. I mean, he's good...
I think it was cut because of circuit breakers.
I think... The original conversation was that Parks Department is needing one. They don't use them as much as Jeff uses his, and that they would buy Jeff's from us, and then we would get a new one.
Put a plan together and give it to finance guys.
Okay.
Make a note for Becky. Put them on the next agenda, please.
Cause that's something that is used every day.
Can you get some bids for us pretty quick, Andy?
Yeah, we can get some quotes.
Do that. Bring it to finance.
Okay. Will do. Is that something that the Parks Department would be...
We haven't talked about it, but I don't know.
I mean, if you're gonna buy it...
What's that? I don't have a number. I mean, we could get a trade-in value and see how that works. I mean, it's all the city's money.
We can always just take money out of your budget, put in parks.
Yeah.
For them, since they're aerial pieces, are they required to be tested? Do y'all actually test them?
I don't think they're big enough, Mike. I don't think those are.
I don't ever recall Jeff talking about having them tested. I don't know whether...
Because what I'm saying is, and the reason I say that is, if we spend $2,000 to test this truck, and it tests the hydraulics are good, if the hydraulics need to be rebuilt, I just assume, figure another area for parks. I don't want to buy something.
Let's go.
I don't blame you.
Let's keep moving.
Did you vote?
Thanks, guys. Bubby's following the stick back there. We gotta get him up here.
Hey, Mike, is there any regulations on putting anybody up in a bucket truck?
I'm kinda afraid after those firefighters...
Is that it? It's just weight capacity? I mean, as far as the city, when we put a Parks employee up there, do they not have to go through any training whatsoever? Go up in a bucket truck?
Thank you.
Vehicle maintenance.
You actually do a question, cause I really think that would be a question. I think that anybody that operates that bucket truck, because of the operators, a lot of different things, I think there should be some training. Do you know anything? Do you all train on that bucket truck? Is there any training information? Bubby, do you know any information?
Amir just talked to me about we're all gonna have to be certified on certain equipment. Because I'm just thinking, I don't know that anybody in Parks...
For your 30, 40 feet, if they stretch it beyond and lay it down, then we get a point. I used to get classed on forklifts, so I'm sure there's that bucket truck.
Right.
Amy, what page is he...
I know we do on the forklift. I think it's certain. We'll find out.
Bobby, fans in, lights in. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
Saw them today.
Fans in, and all the new lights in.
Hands are in, the lights are in, and it's great.
Saw them today.
Probably cooled that place 15 degrees.
Did you...
It's warming it up right now.
Bubby, before we get started, have you addressed... You and I had a conversation about three weeks ago that the pumps need to be cleaned. They have not been cleaned in about 10 years, and we are regulating to clean those?
I'm bringing a different company in to look at them.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we didn't use some chemicals to put in the tanks, and I'm not sure that didn't clean it. But it's still a possibility. That's y'all dentists, the samples today.
Big time difference.
Yes.
Hey, Bubby, just to be clear, you wrecked on your performance pool. We're pulling that out of your budget.
I did what?
You're pulling that out of the stick performance pool. Don't put that underneath.
Okay.
Put that right there. We don't put that in the councils. You still have to do your evaluations, and is it up to 3%?
What is this last item?
I don't think that's accurate, what you just said. We're doing a... We've put a percentage back, maybe 3% average. Some could get more, some less. The bucket of money's based on maybe 3% for the whole thing. If that's what we budgeted. I don't even know if we budgeted that this year yet, but...
It's gonna take all the performance and zero everybody and put that dollar amount under account.
Yes. But was that amount based on 3%?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where I guess I got that.
That's where you got the... So some could get more, some could get less. Okay.
Amy, what is this last item? It says transfer out. Is that the fuel?
Yes.
All right.
Very last one, Matt.
Why doesn't that say?
Because it just said to transfer out to the other home.
To his non-reverting nation.
With the man card. Come on. Connie. Yes, I know.
They like to keep you in the dark, Smitty.
Yeah.
And we used to get, I forget how much from Stephanie's budget, but it got cut this year, so we don't get anything from Stephanie's budget.
Utilities are up...
What's the cause of the utility increase? Is that just not appropriately budgeted for this year, or...
Yes. We've already taken 2,500 from the transfer out to his gas utility. I shouldn't... It's already backed down to 400 and something, so it just depends.
Is it...
We've got, what, three more payments?
Right.
Yes. Electricity, I just turned... Give I turn one in for... It's for a three-month period. 1,405 dollars and some change, and that's brought it down. I don't know what the total is, but gonna need another 1,000 for a December payment.
But like, the water utility is requested 100% increase. Natural gas is up 50%. That's a lot. That's a big gap for utilities. I mean, the prices are what they are, so that's what we need. That's what we need. I just wondered why there was such an increase. We don't have any new facilities or anything that were...
That they're not telling you about?
Yeah.
No.
If we bought a new building, we'd let us see.
Yeah, and it was cold last year, and it's supposed to be cold this year.
The furnaces that we have are about the cheapest furnace you can get.
Yeah.
They're gas hogs.
Oh, are they?
What about the training dollars? Up 300%?
We haven't used any training, but we've got the new Chevrolets from the police department, and we're gonna have to have some type of start some training.
That makes sense.
Bubby, the only question I've got is motor equipment and supplies. You're up about...
That's all about.
25.
You had 121,800 this year, 150 next year.
Did I interrupt you, man?
I'm sorry.
You were lingering there.
A lot of the Chevrolets are going out of warranty.
Okay.
You know, most of them right now are still under warranty, but they're right on the verge of going out. So we're figuring more expenses.
Your contractual services, I'm on page eight, second from the bottom. Looks like you're not even at the budget for this year. It's been expended, but there's a 30% increase.
That's because I'm doing all the maintenance right now, and I was looking to have somebody else come in and help do some of the maintenance. Cleaning, restrooms.
You should.
I do.
You should... No, I mean, you should have somebody come in and help.
Just so that's updated?
Yes.
You what?
That also pays your internet.
Are there any new people in here that we don't know about?
Nothing uniform.
Okay, because the perf is up $8,000. Yeah, well, the percentage went increased at least eight percent. But I'm not sure. Well, when we asked that earlier for another department, no one... Right, we'll check all that, so. Remember? Okay.
Mr. Visson, I don't know if you heard Connie's question, but did you budget for any new employees?
No.
In this budget?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Bubby, do we... I know you do, but how do we... Because the fuel, I know it's hard for you to manage, but the fuel goes up and down, and I know we sell fuel like the county and stuff. Is all that working, and when the costs go up, do we pass that cost on to them, or how's that based?
It's based on a first in, first out. So when we get the fuel, it's charged out with a 5% increase, and every time they get fuel, they're paying 5% on whatever it cost at that time. It's averaged out.
Amy, where's that show where that money is being paid into the line item where that... It's just, I use accounting, but whomever paid into...
255, oh, 25 number.
What page?
I don't have a page number.
Maintenance and... Is that under... Hold on, is that under the revenue?
Yes.
I don't... I'm not following exactly.
Are you wanting to know how much money you're putting into that fund?
Yeah, I just... Yeah, if I want to track the county or whomever buys gas from us... Okay, but we... I mean, I want to make sure we manage to keep that. So that's the...
Looks like 13 million we brought in.
Where's it going, he or we?
Almost a half a million dollars.
That's probably total. They may have bought a half a million dollars of fuel, but that wouldn't be...
I'm not following. I can't. I don't understand.
He's got a different budget sheet. I'm sorry.
I am. Guess that's what you put it in there for. Page number seven from the front, I believe. It's very front of binder. Get a...
Can you read it for you?
And that gets money from the general fund vehicle maintenance on that transfer outline?
Right. That first line.
Yeah, and then it also gets money from sanitation or used to.
Well, I don't know which one it came from Stephanie, but one or three.
And then that's where the circuit breaker comes from.
So funds and reimbursements is what the other municipalities or whomever buys gas for us deposits?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt said it's like 458, $58,000 in 13.
And also, if you look at the very first page of all that, we can all...
Why is it going down? Cause we're estimating 14 to drop from 457 to 239, and 15 is only showing 100,000.
I think they just put those numbers in there arbitrarily so that we're not expecting to hit half a million dollars if any changes. Is that right?
Yes.
Those are just projections.
Some of that would be...
Bad, and we don't get Stephanie's money anymore, so that's a problem.
I think it'll...
That's definitely gas money.
So what... Where does Stephanie buy her fuel?
From me.
Yeah, sanitation just always had a line item that they would kick in money to help pay...
For fuel?
For everybody, yeah. Not for everybody, but for the...
But they still buy, they still purchase fuel at the tanks? Are you saying they're not reimbursing it?
Do you want to put that in the budget for next year? We cut it out of the budget.
Why isn't sanitation not reimbursed?
I think we should put it in the budget. These brands, why don't we may have to cut it out?
They use the most fuel out of any, well, police.
So sanitation, when they get their circuit breaker, they cut their fuel reimbursement to us for gasoline?
It was in the line called transfer out.
Okay.
Cause that's where it transfers out to the vehicle maintenance line or fund. And if you look at page 22...
They didn't know that.
Shame on us, we did it. She only has 35,000 in there, because it was originally... Originally it had 300,000, and then the circuit breaker cut it to 206,400.
Hey, where you... Okay, I'm on... Where are you at?
On page 22.
I got that.
Up in sanitation at the top.
Can you put...
Transfer outline, it says for 2014, the 35, 458.
Is it...
That's the difference between the 300,000 and the 200,000.
Is it possible, if we put a transfer out back in there, under the other, to add it and say transfer out for fuel?
Yes.
Cause I think we maybe didn't realize it was for fuel, and it would have been... But if we knew it was for fuel, I think we would not have cut there.
Yeah.
So what was it before we cut it out?
300.
I would suggest we put it back in there.
At 300?
At 300, and then... But put transfer out for fuel, so we got it.
Do you want to have that added to the additional for 2014, or just...
200.
Well, where are we going?
We're gonna... Are we gonna be okay for... I think they said they're gonna...
On the very first page that has the yellow lines?
Yep. Oh, I see.
240.
I don't think we will. I mean, it'll likely be cutting it close for...
Let's cross that bridge when we come to it.
Just keep a close eye on that.
What I do want to back up, I'm a little confused. The sanitation reimburse us for gasoline. And when they did their circuit breakers, you're saying that they cut their reimbursement dollars?
They didn't. Somebody did.
I think we did, because it just said transfer out, and we didn't know what the transfer out was for. We didn't... That's why we say put it transfer for fuel. We inadvertently, or we all inadvertently...
Yeah.
I'm surprised you didn't say something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything like that again, let us know.
I didn't know until I called her to say, Steph, I need some gas money, and she said they cut it.
Yeah, it is.
Bubby, don't let anything like that happen again.
So on page 22, we're gonna reinsert 300,000 at the bottom and change that page.
But the whole 300 is not gonna be all fuel, is it? Cause didn't she have somebody in there for her own transfer out stuff?
No. That's what that was.
Where are you at, Matt?
Page 22.
So right now, for the...
Other vehicle?
I thought she had like 30,000 or something in it.
201, yeah.
The last line that says transfer out, put transfer out fuel.
Would she not have 20, at least 30,000?
And add 300.
300,000 for 15.
Okay. But that's what I'm asking is, when you said the 300, that whole 300 is not for fuel?
It's whatever she... Yeah. Don't you even the villain or whatever she uses.
Okay. Typically.
Yeah.
Now that we've screwed up Stephanie's budget again.
Okay. I'll call her on my way home and let her know.
Oh, she'll be happy.
Okay, Andy, 400,000.
No, that one are...
I don't have a packer, that's what I'll tell her. Sorry, Steph, you don't get a packer. We get gas.
Fancy a packer, fancy a packer.
Hey, Jay. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was fine. We just moved the performance pool to the council. We're gonna check on the interest number. Everything else is the same number? Yeah. Does he have any other pages? Uh, well, and then I had a question about on page nine. For the equipment, is that line falling under your 5,000 dollars?
Have the lease equipment?
No, the equipment line.
Just above the transfer out.
If it's capital.
42,000.
You got 42,000, 43,000 roughly budgeted. He's only spent 30,000, 4,000.
You're gonna rebuy a lift or something?
Gonna rebuy, yes.
Is that not showing up on here?
No.
This is just as a change, so many things happen. So just for clarification, I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, any capital, we said any capital purchase over $5,000 has to come back here for...
So do you want to zero this out and put it into the council, or are you gonna give him some?
I thought we passed the motion that said all capital over 5,000 is moved. And so leave 5,000 and ever...
We just kept saying it's a non-reverting one. But then, right, that's what I... Yeah, you're right. I don't think we could separate out his non-reverting. No, we don't.
Any other questions for Bubby?
Thank you, Bubby.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Piece of cake, wasn't it, brother?
I should have let him go first.
Me, too.
Maybe I'll clarify. That's right.
That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
When they come back.
Thanks, Becky.
That's the intent. Yeah. Yeah. I have a... Ken, when these department heads come and they say, "We need this type of capital purchase, and it's gonna be over $5,000," can you track every one of those?
You got it in there today.
Spreadsheet, whatever, what department police... And then when they come back, we'd say, "Yeah, they asked for this." We're writing it down, I think.
Here's your new one.
And put a note by it what they had thought it was for.
And it goes...
Amy changed that yesterday afternoon.
Parks is your last one.
What was that for?
Parks goes right here.
I didn't hear that.
Probably lips.
Lips, for this year. For next year, you didn't say.
Car lips, I mean.
That way we...
Yeah, cause some of them don't have, they just have a number.
And maybe we need to clarify that, ask them. And if they just say, "Well, we're trying to be proactive." We know we'll probably need something.